All right, we are ready to get started. Soon as council is ready. Today is Tuesday, November 5th, 2024. This is the City Council regular meeting. I'm calling it to order and giving notice that we may vote to recess into executive session, which will not be open to the public, to discuss or consult with the city's attorneys. Can we have roll call?
Mayor Daggett.
Here.
Vice Mayor Aslan.
Here.
Councilmember Harris.
Here.
Councilmember House.
Here.
Councilmember Matthews.
Here.
Councilmember McCarthy.
Here.
Councilmember Sweet.
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Matthews, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
It would be my pleasure. Please stand if you're able. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The mission of the City of Flagstaff is to protect and enhance the quality of life for all. The Flagstaff City Council humbly acknowledges the ancestral homelands of this area's indigenous nations and original stewards. These lands, still inhabited by native descendants, border mountains sacred to indigenous peoples. We honor them, their legacies, their traditions, and their continued contributions. We celebrate their past, present, and future generations, who will forever know this place as home.
Thank you. Next up is Open Call to the Public, which enables the public to address the council about an item that is not on tonight's prepared agenda. And you have three minutes, and the council cannot have a back and forth with you. And our first person is, our only person, it looks like, is Dennis Givens.
Thank you, Mayor Daggett, Vice Mayor, City Council staff, citizens of this good city. Hi, I'm Dennis Givens of the South Side, a nonpartisan independent. This might be my last City Council meeting, and I promised myself I wouldn't cry. I won't cry, okay? Maybe I will, I don't know, maybe later. All right, I just want to thank everyone in the room, city manager, deputy city manager, deputy city attorney, maybe? What's your role here? City, no, no, the one, the ma'am, I know you're the city attorney. All right, I just, city clerk, staff, you guys are an excellent group of people. You make this city the city it is today, and it's a really great city. That's why everyone wants to move here. Thank you so much, City Council, you guys are awesome. I've learned so much from everyone in this room. And it's just awesome to be a part of this, to be here all the time, and really learn from you all. And thanks to citizens here for being here, awesome. And let's see what else I have on here. Yeah, we should lobby the state and talk about Airbnb. So we could form a coalition of the willing, maybe call it Becky Daggett and Friends, and we should really tackle this Airbnb crisis. You know, you can own like five, but do you need to own 27 in a neighborhood and ruin that neighborhood? Come on, let's get to work on that. And no matter who wins, Christ is king. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Dennis. And I was just given this card, so we have Colleen Maring.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. My name is Colleen Maring. I am the Chief People Officer and General Counsel of Northern Arizona Healthcare. Happy Election Day. We wanted to come today to thank the Coquenino County Recorder's Office. The Special Election Board sent a representative today to help our patients vote, who had not voted early and were not able to get to the polls today. So we're very grateful to the office and to the representative who came to come, room to room, to verified voters who were able to cast their ballots in today's election, who would not have otherwise been able to do that. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. All right, next up on the agenda is Proclamations and Recognitions, Presentation of Leadership in Energy Efficiency Award.
Yeah, they're going to give comments first, and then we'll get a picture of you receiving the award as a council. There we go.
We're going comments first now? Sounds good.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. I'm going to start by reading a prepared statement from Elise Jones, who is the Executive Director of the Southwest Energy Efficiency Project, also known as SWEAP. Elise says that, quote, "Each year, the Southwest Energy Efficiency Project," or as I will refer to it from this point on, "SWEAP," presents its leadership and energy efficiency awards to people and organizations in the Southwest that have shown a special commitment to curbing energy waste and promoting climate-friendly energy use. Since SWEAP's founding 23 years ago, we have given out 56 awards. And this year, we are delighted to have the City of Flagstaff Sustainability Office and Eli Chamberlain join this esteemed group. Elise has asked Ramon Alatorre, one of our utility program experts, to represent SWEAP tonight in conveying our deep appreciation for the good work that you do and for the model that it provides to the rest of the region. SWEAP thanks you, and so do your residents and future generations. I also have some prepared comments. My name is, in fact, Ramon Alatorre, and I am, in fact, the Senior Utility Program Manager at SWEAP. I'm also proud to say that I'm an alumni of the Flagstaff Sustainability Office. And so it gives my heart a little extra warmth to be here today to present one of SWEAP's annual leadership awards. But first, a little bit more about SWEAP. It was established in 2001 and operates as a public interest nonprofit organization. SWEAP is recognized as one of the six Regional Energy Efficiency Organizations, or RIOs, working across the nation to advance energy efficiency, beneficial electrification, and clean transportation. As a Rio, SWEAP's territory encompasses the states of Wyoming, Utah, Nevada, Colorado, New Mexico, and of course, Arizona. 2024 marks the 19th year that SWEAP has recognized leaders in the Southwest region. Often, the awards are reserved for high-profile individuals. You might think governors or senators, commission chairs and the like. This is only the second time in nearly two decades that a sustainability office has been recognized, and it is the first time that a joint award has been issued. I provide this context to emphasize that the award is not given lightly and to highlight how much our organization believes in the leadership and collaboration demonstrated by both the Flagstaff Sustainability Office and by Eli over the past years that should serve as a model for other communities. Now, if you've had any ear open to energy efficiency news in the past couple of years, you can't help but be aware that the Inflation Reduction Act was passed in 2022. This is because contained within the IRA is the prospect of rebates and tax credits and resources to support the national transition to cleaner, healthier, and more efficient homes and buildings and mobility. It is a genuinely exciting thing. It is also a hard, complicated, and multifaceted thing. Since 2022, SWEAP has been involved in supporting and advising state energy offices, and in the case of Arizona, the Governor's Office of Resiliency, as they have been first developing and then preparing to implement their rebate and incentive programs. In August 2024, Arizona became one of the first states to launch. It was a major lift, and there will undoubtedly be some bumps in the road and lessons learned in the coming years. However, if you take a moment to review the recommendations that organizations like SWEAP provides to states, as well as the programs that are starting to come online, it is remarkable how similar they look to the work that the Flagstaff Sustainability Office and Eli have been doing for years here in Flagstaff. I will highlight only two points, in particular, to illustrate this point. They are, first, hold high standards, and the second, to make things clear and easy for the general public and/or to customers to be able to understand. When it comes to holding high standards, in the coming years, in order for a home heating system to qualify for a rebate from the Inflation Reduction Act here in Arizona, it is going to be necessary to first get an energy audit or a home assessment. This measure is intended to make sure that new equipment is sized properly and will result in energy savings. An energy audit is harder to do than the all-too-common industry practice of swapboxing, where a contractor simply replaces old or inefficient equipment with new equipment of the same size. However, it makes a big difference in outcomes to do an audit first. Likewise, in order to be eligible for City of Flagstaff rebates, the Sustainability Office has now, for years, required an energy audit for whole-home heating systems. Eli and his company have provided this service for the great majority of rebate-eligible products in the Flagstaff community. The results, both anecdotal and quantifiable, have been impressive. In addition to requiring an audit, the IRA programs coming online now will require the utilization of high-efficiency equipment. Eligibility criteria to receive incentives will likely align with Energy Star certifications. And again, the Flagstaff Sustainability Office has been ahead on this. For years, the rebate program has required high-efficiency equipment with specification tailored to Flagstaff's cold climate. Now, something exciting that I want to emphasize here is that thanks to these high standards, Flagstaff residents that have received an energy audit and installed high-efficiency heat pump equipment may well be able to retroactively claim a rebate or tax credit from the state of Arizona if their project was completed after August 16th, 2022. A retroactive rebate is not guaranteed, but without an audit and without high-efficiency equipment, it would have been impossible. But because the Flagstaff program that has now been in place for years, it is already closely aligned with state and federal programs that went live in August, and Flagstaff residents who made early investments in energy efficiency measures are now well-positioned to benefit from the incentives arriving now. When it comes to making things clear and easy for the general public and customers to understand, on this point, SWEAP in particular wants to recognize Eli and his team. Because of the high standards that I just mentioned, the truth is, it can be difficult for the general public to understand all of the steps and requirements associated with an incentive program. It makes a huge difference when local contractors take it upon themselves to make the process as easy as possible for their customers. Local contractors are the people going into people's homes. They are the ones providing estimates. And as a local contractor, Eli guides his customers through the rebate process step by step. He ensures they are completing all of the necessary process steps, such as getting that energy audit. He ensures that they are only utilizing rebate-eligible equipment. He provides his customers with a project estimate that shows on the invoice the rebates that they are eligible for, so they can understand the final cost of the project. He even works with his customers to complete the paperwork, and more often than not, he submits it to the Flagstaff Sustainability Office on their behalf. This is not normal contractor behavior. So thanks to this collaboration, over the past four years, the Flagstaff Sustainability Office has been able to distribute well over $400,000 in weatherization and energy efficiency equipment, rebates to members of the Flagstaff community. This, in turn, has supported millions of dollars' worth of investments in energy efficiency and electrification by local residents and homeowners. I also learned today that on their next installation, Eli and his team will have completed their 100th cold-climate heat pump project in the Flagstaff community. I could prattle on, but instead, I'll wrap this up and pass out some hardware. On behalf of the Southwest Energy Efficiency Project, it gives me great pleasure to formally award the Flagstaff Sustainability Office and Eli Chamberlain with our annual leadership awards for outstanding achievements in implementing energy efficiency and advancing climate policy in the City of Flagstaff.
I understand there's a desire for pictures.
Thank you, board, and the sustainability, and Eli would like to give a few comments as well.
Yes. Okay.
Where are we?
The mayor, right? What did you say? Photos first? I said, okay. But I guess it's not there. Yeah. That's why I was very well.
There you go.
Marking people.
I'll be short with you, we got.
Say vegan cheese.
One, two, three.
Should we all say heat pumps?
There we go. All right, one, two, three.
Heat pumps.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
He's got his face.
One, two. Go that way.
Hi. Hi. Hi.
All right, well, thank you, everybody. I really appreciate it. I'm just very thankful to live in Flagstaff and live in a city that recognizes these things and has been so supportive of our industry. City Council passing various climate change resolutions. The Sustainability Office, which has been huge, it's amazing team of people that have just been very supportive, and being able to provide rebates for these things that I think are really important and are really important for our future and our environment. And I wish I could take all of this credit myself, but there's a whole team of people behind me that aren't here that really make this work, and I'm just a small part of that. So, but thank you for the recognition and this time talking about this important stuff.
Well, I'd just like to say thank you to our community, to the City Council, our leadership team, and the amazing staff in the Sustainability Office. Without them, this would not be possible. And we are committed to our community and education and collaboration, and just really appreciate the recognition in this space. So thank you so much, SWEAP. All right. Congratulations to us, to sustainability. Eli, thank you. All right, we're down to council liaison reports. I'm going to start with Councilmember House.
Nothing tonight, thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Sweet?
Nothing tonight.
Councilmember McCarthy?
Well, thank you, Mayor. As you know, I'm the liaison to the Transportation Commission, and I attended an event on Friday and Saturday that ties right in, which was the national meeting of the Railroad Passenger Association held in Tucson. It was a very good meeting. Thank you.
Nothing tonight.
Nothing, thank you.
Test, test, test.
Test?
Hello?
Yes, I can't. All right, moving down to consent agenda. I am going to pull Item 7A for consideration on a future agenda. So our consent agenda consists of 7B, C, D, E. Council, are there any items you would like to pull to discuss tonight? All right, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mayor, I move that we approve Items 7, B, C, D, and E.
A second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Moving down to routine items, 8A, consideration and adoption of Resolution Number 2024-43 and Ordinance Number 2024-26. I'm, I have something weird going on with my screen. So we had discussed this at a previous meeting, and if there are no additional questions, I will entertain a motion to adopt.
Mayor, I'll move to adopt Resolution Number 2024-43. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? City clerk?
Mayor, this was just to adopt the resolution. We'll read the ordinance next.
Yes, sorry, I have a, I have something that is covering up words on my agenda. Okay, next up, we have a motion to read the ordinance by title for the final time.
Mayor, I'll move to read Ordinance Number 2024-26 by title only for the final time.
Was there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, city clerk?
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Flagstaff, amending the Flagstaff City Code Title VI Police Regulations, Chapter 6-03 Animal Keeping, by adopting by reference that certain document entitled 2024 Animal Keeping Code Amendments, providing for repeal of conflicting ordinances, severability, authority for clerical corrections, and establishing an effective date.
And a motion to adopt.
Mayor, I'll move to adopt Ordinance Number 2024-26.
A second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, we are down to Item Number 9A, consideration and adoption of Resolution Number 2024-44. This is an IGA between the city and Coquenino County. Hello.
My name's Allison Hughes. I'm the Sports Services Manager for the Flagstaff Police Department. And today, we're discussing the proposed IGA intergovernmental agreement between the City of Flagstaff and Coquenino County. This agreement will allow us to apply for the fiscal year, the federal fiscal year 24 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant from the U.S. Department of Justice. Our goal is to enhance law enforcement programs, providing crucial support to the Flagstaff Police Department and the Coquenino County Sheriff's Office. For background, the JAG program was established in 1984. Funds crime, it funds crime prevention and victim assistance initiatives, and it blends former programs and calculates local funding based on violent crime rates. Flagstaff qualifies as a disparate jurisdiction, which means we are required to apply jointly with the county, allowing each jurisdiction to receive appropriate funds proportionate to local needs. There is no significant financial impact to the city. This grant has been budgeted in FY '25 in the amount of $25,383. This grant covers the cost for the county's requested amount of $7,615, ensuring we can pass through funds with minimal financial burden. The IGA's focus on less lethal equipment offers community benefits by enhancing public safety and providing officers and deputies with tools to resolve incidents quickly and safely, particularly in remote areas. This capability allows for faster resolutions, freeing up resources, and enabling broader law enforcement coverage across the county. Such investments foster community trust and reflect our commitment to responsible, responsive policing. Additionally, these equipment purchases and training initiatives directly support our mission to protect and serve. We are requesting the consideration and approval of the intergovernmental agreement with Coquenino County to secure a grant of $25,383. Of this, $7,615 grant funding will be used to purchase the less lethal equipment for deputies. Let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you. Council, are there any questions? All right, then I will entertain, and we have no public comment.
Correct.
So I will entertain a motion to read the resolution.
I move that we read Resolution Number 2024-44 by title only.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? City clerk?
A resolution of the Flagstaff City Council approving an intergovernmental agreement between Coquenino County and the City of Flagstaff for the application for the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, JAG program, FY 2024 Local Solicitation/CFDA Number 16.738.
Thank you. And a motion to adopt resolution?
I move that we adopt Resolution Number 2024-44.
And I second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right.
Thank you.
Moving down to 9B, consideration and approval of budget adjustment. Hello, Brandy.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Brandy Suda, serving as your Finance Director. So I'm here before you tonight for budget adjustment request for both fiscal year 2023, '24, as well as fiscal year 2024 and '25. Per state statutes, the city is not allowed to expend more than the budget at our legal level of adoption, which is the division level for the city. As well as, we are not allowed to increase the city's total budget. However, cities are allowed to reallocate our budget with council approval if, one, the money is available, two, in the public interest and based on a demonstrated need, which all of these adjustments meet those requirements. We are recommending two budget adjustments. The first one is, as we are wrapping up and finalizing the fiscal year 2023, '24, we had two divisions that are expected to be over budget. The police department by $1.9 million, and the city manager budget by $9,800. These adjustments would be increasing both the PD and the city manager's office by those amounts and reducing the non-departmental budget accordingly. The second budget adjustment is, as we are looking forward into fiscal year 2024, '25, we are anticipating one division to be over budget. The city manager division is expected to be approximately $65,000 over budget. Again, this adjustment would be, would be increasing the city manager's budget and reducing the non-departmental budget accordingly. First off, the city manager's budget adjustments for both fiscal year '23, '24, as well as fiscal year '25, '26, are tied to personnel costs and travel allowance being higher than anticipated at the time the budget was adopted. The city manager's budget is actually our smallest division with a very small, a very limited budget outside of personnel costs, which this is why it makes it very difficult to, almost impossible, to absorb these additional personnel costs within their budget while maintaining operations. Regarding the police department's budget adjustment, this is a result of a decision to make an additional $3.2 million contribution to our public safety personnel retirement system, pension plan, to maintain our 100% funding per the city's pension policy. Rick Tatter and myself would like to take this opportunity to provide a brief presentation on the status update of our PSPRS pension funding and why the need for the additional contribution. So with that, I will turn it over to Rick to start the presentation.
Thank you, Brandy. Rick Tatter, Management Services Director and City Treasurer. To frame the conversation about why did we make an additional contribution to the pension fund, we thought we should also outline the latest impacts and the progress of pension funding in Arizona, as well as the City of Flagstaff. And that would lead into the why and how we funded this last fiscal year. The state as a whole, this is a snapshot of the state over the last five years, and you can see in 2019, they, their average pension funding throughout their organization was about 46.4%. And there was a lot of push for organizations throughout the state to start and drive and try to become more funded in their organizations. And that developed different ways that- And that developed different ways that, that people decided to contribute more funding into the plan, such as one-time payments, annual payments higher than what the recommended amounts, or pension funding was another consideration that others had. And you can see, they made great progress since 2019 to where they are now over 66% funded. So this is great news and something definitely to share, that our state PSPRS board and, and that team are doing a great job, as well as all the communities who have pension funding with the, with the state of Arizona. So, great news there. Our story is even better, of course. Back in 2019, you'll see that we were at 37% funded. Prior to that, we were even lower. So we've been making strides up to 2019, but it wasn't moving the needle fast enough for what we wanted. So, as you recall, in 2020, we did a pension funding, the first in the state to do this. This was for $131 million, and we got an amazing rate of 2.69%. Just incredible timing, and it checked a lot of boxes for the City of Flagstaff and made great sense. And I just want to show that we are continuing on that and the benefits that we've seen. So we've been maintaining that 100% funding, and we currently are as a combined plan, but we have a little bit of change in the police plan that is what we want to look at for funding. This shows the forward look of what we were looking at from back when we had the conversation about pension funding to where we are today. The dash line shows how long it would have been taken for us to really fund our liabilities as a city for our public safety pension. The blue line shows the results of what we did and where we expect to be over the next several years. And numbers are the things I like, so here's kind of financially how we, we're currently standing with our, our pension financing. As you know, we deposited about $116 million of those funds into the pension plans and brought them over 100% funded. Their market rate of returns over the last four years, you can see here, are way above what we financed in pension, the 2.69 versus 4.2 was the lowest. So we've been gaining over what we've financed over the last several years. And so pension, that 116 has grown about $56 million in additional interest earnings in our pension fund. Wonderful news. What did that cost us? Well, at the debt finance, the 131, at that rate, just in the same four-year period, we've only paid about $14 million in expenses. So definitely, you can see the, the gain versus the cost of doing a pension finance that the city decided on. In addition, we also set aside deposit for contingency reserve fund, because we know pension funds have an up and down swing. We've seen that, changes in actuarial policies and markets and so forth. We set aside $14 million, and we're investing that conservatively at 2.4% approximately. And that has also grown by $1.3 million. So clearly, you can see our decisions as a, as a city show we are doing better with this debt finance than we would have done based on annual actuarial planning that PSPRS does. So since then, this is why we made this, this payment, additional payment, is we have a commitment as an organization to stay 100% funding for our pension funds. And we really strive to make sure that happens, and, and we look at it every year, and we will watch it. Council adopts a pension policy with several guidelines and, and opportunities for us to maintain that and move forward at, at above 100% funding policy. I'm not going to read all these, but as you can see, we've got a lot of tools in our toolbox, and we are focused on this, but that leads to the, the $3.2 million contribution, which was, I think, a really good opportunity for the City of Flagstaff this year.
Thanks, Rick. So based on the latest actuarial report, which is as of June 30th, 2023, the PSPRS Police Plan is just at 97.7% funded. So it just went slightly below that 100%, which is an underfunding of approximately $2.5 million. And what we saw is, as we were working with PSPRS staff, to really understand, you know, what caused this change, and how do we plan for this in the future. Some of those main causes that happened over that last year is, the largest cause is salary growth with our officers being significantly greater than anticipated or projected per our actuarial assumptions. So that was the biggest contributor to this. As well as we saw some actuary audit adjustments that PSPRS found and made those corrections to our plan, as well as we had some other actuarial assumption changes since 2020. Those assumptions include the assumed rate of, earning rate of, from 7.4 to 7.2, as well as assumed payroll growth change from 3.5 to 2%. So with that, knowing we were approximately $2.5 million, the city used, we, oh, sorry, I'm on my, the wrong page here. My apologies. The city decided to make an additional contribution in July, or June, of $3.2 million. This payment is based on our pension policies, to say again, 100% funded. With this additional contribution, we anticipate our funding status to be at or above 100% as of 6/30 of 2024. That report will come out later this year, usually in December, as well as stabilize our annual contribution rates and amounts in future years. And so, based on the PSPRS Pension Modeler, we expect to be very close to 100% funded for the next five years with only minor additional contributions maybe needed. So here is kind of a, is a graph showing how the additional $3.2 million impacted our funded status with our police plan today as well as into the future. So you can see, the blue line is with that additional 3.2, and without that contribution, we would continue to see a little bit of a decline before we rebounded back to the 100%. So how did we fund that additional $3.2 million? So we were able to identify multiple funding sources for this additional contribution. It included $600,000 worth of savings in the fiscal year 2023-24 Police Operating Budget. We had savings from our Public Safety Radio Replacement Purchase of $316,000. We also used our fiscal year 2023-24 Pension Contingency Set Aside Funds of $889,000, as well as just under $1.4 million of our set aside for fiscal year 2025-26. In addition to those resources we do, we used, we do have other resources set aside for future additional contributions, should they be needed in the future. We continue to have our Pension Contingency Reserve Funds. Again, that was not used for this additional contribution, as well as in fiscal year 2024-25, we have a pension contingency set aside of just under $2 million, and that is still available, should it be needed. That concludes our presentation and available for any questions.
Thank you. Counsel, questions? Counselmember Matthews?
Thank you. Can you go back to the last?
Yeah.
And you may have said this, and I zoned out. The $316,000 from savings from the Public Safety Radio Replacement Purchase, I remember that coming to counsel in May, May or June, urgent to purchase. Was it that equipment that we had to do before the fiscal year ended?
I believe we made a good chunk of this purchase back in fiscal year 2022-23. And then we did carry over some of this resource into the '24-25 to finalize those purchases. So yes, part of that could have been from that number, I'd have to confirm that with the Police Department, but we were able, we did not need all of the $2 million we had originally set aside for those replacements.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel, additional questions or comments? All right. I will entertain a motion to approve the transfer of the budget appropriations for both the Police Department and City Manager, unless someone would like to make a motion to separate those. Go ahead.
Mayor, I move that we approve items 9B, as you just enumerated.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you so much. All right, we are down to our second open call to the public. And we have Chris C.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Counsel. You know, I do first want to start off with saying I believe we should up the Police Department's budget. They do a great work, certainly quite the task. I also do want to say thank you to Chief Connolly. Met with him last week. We discussed primarily liquor laws and transfer documents from the city to the state. I know he's revising that under Muslim, and it was through a mailbox. Quote-unquote, it's 2024, we shouldn't be speaking in smoke signals. So I'm glad, glad to see that change getting implemented, and I thank you again for taking the time. I also do want to say thank you to Lieutenant Sapp and Officer Rumbly. I had some pretty good conversation with them on Tequila Sunrise about their enforcement of kind of the city's liquor policy. Obviously, it's a college town, it's a huge part of commerce. I addressed the council, I want to say it was three weeks ago regarding the business. It was Bandolera 66, B66 Brunch and Brew. They've rebranded, new LLC, new name, Baddies. Yeah. So if you go onto Google and you Google the word "baddies", the Oxford Language Dictionary definition, a villain or a criminal, a story, movie, or et cetera. It's a little ironic. The owner, Donald Holland, he's been in Flagstaff for several years. Sure you guys know him. He's owned quite a few businesses. I think he's on his sixth LLC now in the City of Flagstaff. He's had quite a bit of turnover, whether that's litigation, files against him, and whatnot. During my Zoom interview, I mentioned that there was over 22 arrests in a four-month period of time from January to April of last year. These are the police reports right here. I hold them in my hands. Those 23 were for liquor in bodies under 21, and also serving to a minor. In a town with a huge college population, that's a serious offense. They hold a Series 12 liquor license, which is equivalent to a restaurant with a bar. Buffalo Wild Wings, Chili's, Pita Jungle. If you guys like this place, it's anything but that. It's not a restaurant. If you go onto their social medias, they advertise well specials, $3 drinks. They clear out their floor, they have a DJ every weekend. This isn't a restaurant, this is a bar. They're operating inappropriately. They've been cited twice by the State Liquor Board. And I, I appreciate the council's decision to deny their referral to the state for their Series 12. Right now, they hold an interim Series 6, which they're continuing to push on forward with, and I'm sure they're going to get denied. I appreciate you guys taking the time to listen to me today. And I wish I had more time to read some lovely quotes out of this. If any of you guys want to see these, please let me know. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, down to item number 11, informational items to from. Let's start with Counselmember Matthews.
I have nothing.
Counselmember Harris. Vice Mayor.
Nothing.
Counselmember McCarthy.
Thank you, Mayor. As I noted before, I just attended the Railroad Passengers Association Meeting in Tucson. And several of the speakers addressed the Amtrak station here in Flagstaff and commented that the waiting room was completely inadequate. And speaking from personal experience, I say that is true. A lot of times, there's not enough room for people to wait for the train. What happens is people have to wait outside. You know, they wander around the platform just waiting for the train to come. Sometimes the train is hours late, and it's very cold out there, and snows sometime. So, and then several people came up to me during the breaks and reiterated the same issue, that, you know, the Amtrak station, half of it has been taken over by the Visitor Center, which is a great place for the Visitor Center, I admit that. But it's at the expense of the appropriate waiting area for the Amtrak trains. So I would like to ask for a fair that will look into if we can move the Visitor somewhere, Visitor Center somewhere else, or some other solution. The bottom line is, we need a Visitor Center at a good location, and we need a, a good waiting area that's adequate for the number of people that are waiting there to get on and off trains. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Counselmember Sweet. Nothing, thank you. Counselmember House.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one quick thing. Last week, I had the opportunity to attend a First Friday Presentation on Equity in Action and Art in Action. And at the end of that presentation, had some community members come forward and share their surprise, dismay, and frustration with the new mural that had gone up in the South Side celebrating African-American contributions to the growth and development of Flagstaff, and the issue with the dumpster that has been moved back in front of that. Apparently, one of the families that was represented on there had the opportunity to come and see it for the first time and was a little dismayed by that appearance, as well as one of the artists who was involved in that, seeing that that was what had become of their work. So I'd just like to raise that and have us look into the permanent moving of that dumpster or what we can do to avoid the issues that have happened there going into the future. Other than that, I'll just say Happy Election Day.
Sure.
If anybody wants to see it, I have a picture in my phone right here. And it looks like Mayor Evans is in the dumpster. It's, it's, it's actually quite humorous, but unfortunately, quite inappropriate. And I don't know what the solution is. I know that during the painting of the mural, the trash can was out on the sidewalk. Maybe that's an option. I'll leave it at that.
Shannon.
Thank you, Mayor Daggett. Wanted to be able to provide an update to council, because this did come up at our recent council meeting. Been working with Public Works as well as Beautification and Art with an Economic Vitality to get some background in order to address these concerns that were brought forward to council. So we have work underway to address that. Wanted to give you that assurance that we've heard you, as well as our community members.
You're rolling your eyes at me, Mayor.
Did I do that?
I'll just point out that the city spent BBB funds to, to build this, put this mural in. So a lot of city money and time and effort went into this project.
City Manager, anything? I mean, in general, or on this?
Other than that, we are working on this issue that was just stated. I have nothing further, thank you.
All right. Well, it looks like we're adjourned. Have a good evening, everyone.